Thank you Charlie Minkler for joining us today for the third candidates forum. If you haven't seen these before, Charlie will have three minutes for an introduction. And then I will ask questions, 90 seconds to answer the questions. And I'll be timing it and I'll hold up my little 15 second do that for you. So you know you have 15 seconds left with your response time. Also, for everybody, make sure you're on mute. And if you want to just put your name up, you know, have video running. That always helps with bandwidth, things of that nature. Charlie thumbs up, are you ready? All right, we got a thumbs up. Well, with that, I'll introduce Charlie Minkler, who is running as an independent for La Plata County Commissioner. With that Charlie, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Jack. Thanks for the opportunity to participate in this forum. Open by acknowledging all those affected by the East Canyon fire. And especially those who've been evacuated from their homes. And those who have property or livestock at risk. A giant thank you out to the firefighters and other emergency responders who put their lives on the risk. And our thoughts and prayers are with you all. So about myself, I am a fourth generation Colorado native. I've lived most of my life in La Plata County and moved here in 1982. I actually grew up in a more urban environment and even attended an inner city high school. My primary source of income all these years has come through my residential construction business. Thirty seven years ago, I married into agriculture when I married my sweetheart Katie. And we have owned our ranch together east of Ignacio for 25 years. I have had the unique opportunity of living and understanding both rural and urban issues. I'm a La Plata County farmer. And my 60 year serving on the planning commission. I love La Plata County and I want to ensure that our children and grandchildren enjoy tomorrow as much as we do today. My many years experience as a business owner, rancher, planning commissioner. enables me to be an effective leader who will make a difference for our future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my first question will be, what is your vision to make housing affordability a reality for La Plata County? And again, 90 seconds to answer.
So housing affordability, I like this question because it's personal to me. I have over 30 years experience in the residential construction business. I'm a former president of the local home builders association. There are three factors in my opinion that affect affordability. One is the market or supply and demand. Another is government regulation. And the third is wages. You can't do much about the market. And I have been on record and will continue to speak out about regulation and be against anything that affects affordability. But I support and encourage economic development that will bring higher jobs, higher paying jobs into the county. To help bridge the wage gap to affordability. I also would continue to support many of the organizations in our area like Home Fund and Housing Solutions of the Southwest.
Great, thank you. That sounds much better. I think we got it finally. So we'll continue on as we, as we are with this, with this setup. So, so are you for or against a moratorium associated with the new land use code and why?
That's a good question, Jack. I'm against the moratorium. I felt that it would hurt local businesses and the local economy. Although I acknowledge some of the reasons for proposing it. I felt that in these difficult and unprecedented times, that it was not appropriate. And I commend the Board of County Commissioners for looking at the big picture and taking it off the table.
Okay, thank you. So along with, along the business idea, what will you do to support all businesses in the county, including agriculture, natural gas, retail and restaurants? And describe something that you would want to implement to be helpful for these struggling sectors.
Well, that's a good question. Thanks for asking it. I, I support all business in the county. I've been a business owner for over 35 years. And I've been able to keep my business viable during both good and bad times. And I know what it's like to meet payroll. And over the years, I've hired and employed many La Plata County residents. So as I said, I'm very pro-business, pro-business. And I strongly would encourage to use new tools that are available in our new land use code. One of them is the economic development area. This provides more opportunities and an easier process for businesses to start and grow and locate here. We need to make sure that the cost of starting and running a business in La Plata County remains low. As Commissioner, I would continue to support many of the great resources that support new and existing businesses. Like the Center for Innovation, Makers Lab, Escape, the Economic Development Alliance, Green Business Roundtable, Downtown Improvement District, just to name a few, there are many.
Great, thank you. Next question, I'm going to ask the broadband. How will you help bring the proper broadband infrastructure to ensure rural communities have the ability to work remotely? We're all using Zoom so much and we had little audio issues. What will you do to help bring more broadband?
Well, that's very timely, Jack. So if we've learned anything from the COVID pandemic, it's the importance of access to broadband. And in our area, we already have a very high rate of telecommuting. So the demand will only increase. And as County Commissioner, I will take advantage of all opportunities to work with the public and private sectors to advance funding sources and infrastructure. The SCC recently initiated the Rural Opportunity Fund. Over $20 billion will be available over the next 10 years to fund rural broadband. The money will start to become available this October, but we need to get our names in the bucket by this July 15. Things like that will be very helpful to bring better broadband into our area. I've reached out to the county and found out that the Southwest Council of Governments is aware of this program and they will be applying for it.
Great, thank you. So along the lines of, you know, maintaining our roads and all the roads that are in La Plata County. Are you for or against a use tax on vehicles?
That's another very timely question, Jack. A lot of us in the county are concerned about roads. Use tax, so are we potentially could earn from 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars in revenue? We had a use tax in our county. That's not a whole lot of money, but if we dedicated that to road maintenance, I think it would definitely help. It seems fair to me that those people who use our county roads should help maintain them. Also, it would help to level the playing field for the many car dealerships in our area. At some point in time, residents in our county may decide that it's time to start doing something about our roads. If and when that happens, I will support a use tax. And then the final decision will fall at the feet of the voters.
Great, thank you. Now, along the same lines with generating revenue for roads and road maintenance, are you for or against road impact fees and why?
Well, as I understand the proposal for road impact fees, they would apply to both commercial and new residential construction. So the fee would be paid at the time of the issuing of a building permit. And that would range on a house from 1,000 to 4,000 dollars based on the square footage of the house. Road impact fees may have a place as one of the many sources for income to fix our roads. But I don't agree that it should be a primary source. I'm generally against road impact fees because all of the burden falls on one group. Those getting a building permit instead of spreading it over the entire county or neighborhood. I'm also against it in any way that it would be, have potential negative impact on affordability.
Okay, thank you. So to shift a little bit, one of the questions that were posed to, when I solicited some folks. This is, there's so much turnover at the leadership levels of the county. And don't you think it's interesting seeing that we have turnover at nearly every leadership position except the county attorney's office? And our problems at the county have remained the same for two decades. Why do you think that is the case?
Well, I've been thinking a lot about that, Jack. And I have met personally with most of the department heads and many of our elected officials, officials in the county. And many of these folks, our staff, our department heads have been with the county for many years, if not their entire career. I'm really impressed with the loyalty and dedication that they've displayed, even through periods of wage freezes and things like that. So rather than analyze the past, I look forward to the future. And I really don't have any political aspirations other than serving as a La Plata County Commissioner and doing my best to serve the people of La Plata County. And I want to do what I can, looking forward toward the difficult issues that are ahead of us. How to support, attract and keep businesses here. And how to address affordability and improve it. And how to bridge the gap, I think the gap that, or divide that exists between urban and rural residents in our county.
Great, thank you. Something along here. So speaking of the different things within the county, working with the city. Do you think the county and the city should install infrastructure, water, sewer, road improvements on the Posta Road? Or do you think development should pay its way?
I'm glad you asked that, Jack. La Posta Road is an area in our county that's poised for development. It has two out of the three things that are required for new development, which are water, sewer and roads that meet the requirements. So I'm in favor of exploring a way that the county could contribute to the development of La Posta Road. I look at it as an investment. I think that it will pay back many times over in tax based revenue. And also benefit to residents for more and potentially higher paying jobs. So I'd like to see the county get involved in that development and possibly participate financially as an investment for our future.
Great, thank you. Talking about the different budgets with everything going on with the budgets of all governments declining in income. What is your potential solution to balance the budget without raising taxes? So this is yes or no to each of these and I'll let you explain further. So yes or no, would you agree to furloughing employees?
Well, yes, I would consider it.
Okay, what about cutting costs without layoffs?
I would take that under consideration as well.
Dissolve or consolidate departments?
Yes, I would consider that also.
And cost share with other governments for communications or human resources, road and bridge, or share fleet maintenance?
Yes, I would consider that, Jack. And let me go on to say that as your county commissioner, I would take seriously my obligation to consider every option on the table. So yes, would I consider it? Yes, would I do it? That's another question. I want to report some good news. I was in a long-term finance committee meeting last week. And county finances are not as bad as initially expected. In fact, no furloughs or layoffs will happen this year and none are expected for next year. My, in my opinion, furlough, excuse me, furloughs and layoffs are a last resort. We need to keep and hold on to one of the county's greatest assets, its employees. Now, would I dissolve or consolidate or do cost sharing? I would consider those options case by case, weighing the cost savings against the benefit to county residents.
Thank you. So along the lines of real estate, would you support legislation or an initiative that would create additional taxes or fees on the sale of real estate?
Well, that's an interesting question. I, I would say no, I would not favor that. You know, a lot of times we think that increased taxes and fees are just absorbed by somebody. But in fact, they get passed on to the consumer. So long-term, I don't think it's a good plan. And especially where it might affect affordability on the post to it.
Okay, and then along that line, how do you think you could make development and growth areas more affordable?
Okay, let's see, that's a good question. You know, it really boils down to a couple of simple principles. The first one is density. And the second one is proximity to infrastructure. Think of the Rocket Point Apartments between Home Depot and Walmart. So we need to concentrate on those two things. And there's other ways that we can help get costs down. By cooperating with organizations that might assist in construction costs or mortgage assistance. There's also been talk about resurrecting our regional housing authority. And that could be a possible avenue to access government loans and grants.
Okay. Um, my questions here, the land use code is in its draft form. And do you believe that the public comment should be in person and not via Zoom because of the COVID crisis? And since you may be taking the oath in January, would it be better to adopt a code before or after you are in office?
That's another one of those questions, Jack, that I've given a lot of thought to. So first of all, many people that are most affected by the new land use code live in our rural parts of our county. And they don't have or have limited access to broadband. Now, I'm also happy to report that as of today, in-person testimony is starting to be allowed. So Chuck Stevens, our county manager is working hard to find ways that the public can come in and person and testify in these different venues about including the land code. So currently, our land code, our land use code is very outdated and inefficient. It was written originally mostly for residential development and it lacks the tools that are needed for robust commercial development. It doesn't support ag very well. The new code is so much better that I do not think it's appropriate to delay approving the new code. As long as we have good public participation in the hearing and commenting process.
And it's interesting to them, people that didn't know that, that I did hear also that they're going to start allowing in-person testimony. So I'm encouraged to hear that because I know we're all zoomed out by the end of the day. And I know they have them earlier in the day as well. But again, you can go to La Plata County website and see the upcoming meetings. And I know the input for the land use development code is very important. So with oil and gas, the Senate Bill 19-181 gives local control of the oil and gas regulations for siting. And since current code has provisions already for siting, would you look at rewriting that code? And since the state is already rewriting rules for oil and gas operations, protecting health, safety and welfare and the environment, along with wildlife? And that will be effective in November. Do you see a need for the county staff to rewrite the natural gas land use code?
Well, I'm glad you asked that, Jack. As Marsha Porter-Harden noted last week, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, or COGCC, is still in the rulemaking process. And our county will be required to comply with the new rules. I believe that rewriting or writing our own regulation instead of relying on the experts of the COGCC is expensive and inefficient. And I see no reason to duplicate it at the taxpayer's expense.
Great. Um, here's one short question and direct. Do you think the current commissioners, or let me, let me read this differently. Yeah, let me go to another question. Is it a conflict for the county attorney's husband to be hired in a leadership position for the county?
That's an interesting question. I've met, as I said, with most of the department heads in the county. And I have met with Mr. Rogers and personally. And I've been in many meetings where he has spoken or presented, including long-term finance committee meetings, where he reports regularly about the finances of the county. I'm not aware of any violations of county policy. So the question is, would I recommend that we do that in the future? Probably not, because I've heard a lot of concerns expressed by members of the community.
Right. Sorry, there's a pause because I'm stopping the timer and clicking my unmute. So Colorado's economy has grown rapidly in recent years, fueled by a strong job market and the quality of life that defines the Colorado experience. And we have seen the ballot proposals to limit growth, impair on statewide elections and local communities that would place arbitrary limits on growth that could cripple future economic prosperity. And create growth burdens on the already low inventory of housing available to Colorado consumers. How do you feel about that limiting growth?
Well, that is an important discussion. And Jack, I'm not in favor of these kinds of proposals. Typically, all they do is drive up prices and push growth into neighboring communities. I want a community where my children and grandchildren can find, find good employment and housing and afford to stay here if they choose to.
Okay, um, so this is a bigger arching question. La Plata County, you mentioned earlier, is not as, as bad of a financial situation as we thought. But we've been led to believe that it is in a financial crisis. What solutions do you have to improve the revenues for the county?
Well, as I mentioned, they're not as bad as, as we think. And we have many options. For example, I've consulted with the oil and gas industry and found out that projected revenues are expected to be stable, if not slightly higher. Because of very low oil prices, many oil wells that produce, produce natural gases as a byproduct are being shut in. And this may actually increase the demand. And we may see a slight increase in prices in revenue going forward from oil and gas industry. Now, our county manager and our finance director have done a really great job, I think, in managing our county's finances. And they're in capable hands. And I think with the wise decision-making and conservative fiscal policy that we can remain solvent. And actually be able to do things to invest in our community and county in the future.
Thank you. Now, a question that was proposed last time in the chat, do you support the emergency management program? And what do you think about the EMP program?
Well, I, to me, Jack, that's a no-brainer. Of course I support it. And these type of programs, this program in particular is vital to us. We're living through another experience of a fire that's threatening our county. And so having a team and good technology, up-to-date technology, access to that is vital and I think we should support it.
There we go. So one question that I like to ask is, what have I not asked that you'd like us to know?
Well, Jack, I think the question that you haven't asked me that I'd like to answer is, is what do I think about the government and community response to COVID restrictions? And my answer to that is I'm both encouraged and concerned. I'm encouraged by things like the bump outs on Main Avenue. And when I hear about a local business that provides free banners to other businesses, things like that are fantastic. But I'm really concerned about the hit we're taking on our local businesses, our small businesses. You know, I heard a person say to me the other day that they considered one of the largest transfers of wealth in recent times. What's happening right now to our small businesses? Because while our businesses, our small businesses have been closed for the last three months. You know, some of the other big boxes and stuff are going on business as usual. So it's been really tough. And I think going forward, we need to really work hard to support our local businesses and keep them solvent, keep people employed, keep the economy of our area moving.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to let, if anybody has a question, or you want to put something in the chat, we've got a little bit of extra time. So what are the questions that, another one that, and you can put something in the chat and I'll take a look at it. I've heard people talking about simple lot splits for years, allowing planning staff to be able to make a decision as it relates to a simple lot split when it conforms to the existing area improvements and does not impair neighbors. Yet residents of La Plata County still have to go through a minor subdivision process for that simple lot split. And no authority has been delegated to the planning department. So if elected, what are you going to do to change that?
Well, that's something I'm a bit familiar with, having been on the planning commission for a while. So, you know, lot splits and things like that are sometimes complicated. They're not always as simple as they may seem. One thing that I really like about our new land use code is that many things are extremely simplified. So things that used to take many hearings and complicated processes are now simplified. So that a lot of these splits and second homes and things. so that a lot of these splits and second homes and things like that can be handled through administrative approval. So that's great. So our new code is still based on compatibility, and that's the way we've decided to do land use in our county. And so I understand that, you know, neighbors and stuff want to be involved and knowledgeable about things that might come up. So I'm pretty comfortable with some of the processes that we have outlined in our new code, and I think that most people will find them much easier and simpler to navigate.
Okay, Charlie, so along that same line, what is something that can be done to improve the processes about the current, you know, planning process? What are some things that you're encouraging, you like to see with simplifying that process?
Well, that's a good question. So as I mentioned before, our old land use code is inefficient, and it's kind of clunky. So one of the new things, features of the new code is that on a large project, an applicant can submit what is called a sketch plan, a sketch plan review upfront. So they can kind of go for a soft yes or no in the beginning and decide whether to proceed with their project without having to spend an arm and a leg. So that's really great. The new code, as I mentioned, has many, many administrative land uses now that will be decided administratively instead of through hearings. And one of the things I really like about the new code is a feature called Ag Plus. Ag Plus includes uses by right and many uses with minimal review that will help ag people stay on their land and in production.
Great, thank you. So I am going, I'm looking at my questions. It's one that I think we kind of asked earlier, but it's the one that I have not crossed off. But how will you deal with the shortfall of oil and gas industry revenues that we've seen over the years? What plans do you have that we could, plans to increase La Plata County revenues?
Yeah, I kind of feel like I answered that, Jack, but I can reiterate it. So first of all, I think that we're looking, at least in the near term, at some pretty stable prices and revenue to the county based on conditions that I explained. And I think that one of the main things we can do is to continue with a robust economic development program where we're bringing the right kind of businesses in here that have better paying jobs and will increase our tax base.
Great, thank you. So with that, I don't see any others. So we'll give you three minutes for closing statements. Thank you for hanging in there with us with all the audio glitches. It sounded great once we got the phone part taken care of. So I have three minutes for closing remarks.
All right, thank you, Jack. Well, I'd like to say that I've worked hard to be prepared to serve the citizens of La Plata County as a county commissioner. I'm dedicated to serving and representing all citizens and residents of La Plata County, those that live in the towns, in the city of Durango, and those in the unincorporated county. I've been on the planning commission for going on six years. I'm a member of the core group of La Plata Civil Dialogue, a group that's committed to bringing folks from all areas and backgrounds together to discuss challenging topics and problems in our county. I've attended as many county commissioner and other meetings as possible in the last six months or longer, and I have, as I've said, I've met with most elected officials and department heads in our county. I applied and was accepted into the most recent class of leadership of La Plata so that I could learn more about and better understand all of the different social, governmental, business, and political aspects of our county and the great people who live here. When elected, I will encourage the continuation of on-the-road community meetings and will hold regular office hours, not only in Durango, but throughout my district. I will be accessible, open-minded, and listen thoughtfully to county residents. All of this, along with my business, ranching, and general life experience, have enabled me to be an effective county commissioner, listens to county residents, and makes the best choices for our future. I ask you all on this call to vote for the person, not the party. Vote for Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you want to, I'm going to ask one more, I'm sorry, but explain, you and Jack Turner proposed, I may not know, could you explain why you're having to get the signatures? And when is your next signature drive to get on the ballot?
Well, thank you. I'll take just a minute to do that. So Jack Turner and I are running as independent or unaffiliated candidates. So the process for us to get on the ballot is through petition. So right now, probably most registered voters in the county have received a ballot that is for the primary runoff for the races in the state. Now, since we have to use this other process, we have to gather a certain number of signatures from residents of our county. They have to be a registered voter, but they can be of any party affiliation, and they can live in any part of the county. So we're holding our last drive-through signature signing event this Saturday. In the morning, we'll be at the Breen Community Center from 8:00 a.m. to 10:30, and then we'll wrap up in Durango at the Durango High School parking lot from noon until 4:00 p.m.
Great, well, thank you for explaining that. And what is your website? All righty. I'll let you get a plug. Well, with that, we will wrap up today's Meet the Candidate. Again, Charlie, sorry for all the audio glitches at the beginning, but thank you for hanging in there. And we'll have County Commissioner Candidate Matt Sulka on Thursday from 11:00 to noon. So again, you can register at durangobusiness.org. So thank you, everybody, for attending. Stay safe out there. As I always say, wear your mask, wash your hands, and we'll see you at the next Commissioner Candidate or Meet the Candidates Forum. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.